We are approving, looking to approve the minutes for February 27, 2018, business meeting, and approval of the minutes for the March 20, 2018 work session. Are there any corrections? There being no, I'm sorry, Mr. Caldwell?
I turned mine off.
No correction, okay. There being no corrections, we're ready for a roll call vote.
Board member Caldwell?
Aye.
Board member Orgul?
Aye.
Board member Woods? Board member Love?
Aye.
Board member McCormick?
Aye.
Board member Jones?
Aye.
Board member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board member Cornell?
Aye.
Board chair Avant?
Aye.
You have eight ayes.
We have a quorum. The minutes are approved. We are now moving on to committee reports. I want to first share from my report tonight, I want to thank Ms. Klae Bibbs for her outstanding leadership in what was a phenomenal night for the SES Gala that was held this past Saturday We were able to recognize Tony Armstrong, Brandis Lee, Judge Jim Kyle, Johnny Moore, and the late Burnell Smith, and we had great representation. It was a phenomenal night, and it was a testament to SES and the great work that we're doing to see those folks come back and who have done such great things in this community and beyond. So, thanks for all who were able to attend. I also just want to recognize a few folks who made something phenomenal happen today. Today, we hosted the Second Annual Girls Summit in recognition of Title IX. We had 300 middle school girls who participated today, and we'll have 200 high school girls who will participate tomorrow. This is a program that is in collaboration with the Women's Foundation and the Memphis Grizzlies. They had phenomenal basketball players and female athletes from across the country who came to participate. We also got a picture with Tamika Katsins, my alma mater, UT Knoxville, I'm just going to say that, shout out, Go Vols! She did a great job of doing skills trainings. So many of the girls talked about how wonderful it was not only to have that experience with those women at that type of level of both collegiate and professional level, but that they learned so much about the power of girls. And so, I want to thank India Weaver, who, Director of our SCIAA, for organizing this event to make sure our girls have this opportunity, but I'd also like to thank Mr. Steve Wary with Transportation, who was so instrumental in making sure that we had transportation for those girls back and forth to schools, and Jank Allen, who helped coordinate. So, I'm appreciative of all the hard work that comes for making sure that our girls have those types of opportunities. Thank you to all the staff. I'll now move into the Academic Performance Committee report. Ms. Bibbs?
Thank you, Chair. So, I'm going to take a point of privilege to just say a little bit more about the Gala on Saturday night. I just want to make it a point to extend the sincerest gratitude to the communications team, Chief Powers, and everyone at the TCC, Stephanie Everson, John Best, and the whole team, because without their help, that event wouldn't be possible. And if anyone has a Facebook page, I'm sure you can go to the Voice of SES, as well as a lot of the attendees' pages, and see what a great time we had. Thankful for the superintendent for understanding the vision and the mission of that event and making sure that we move it forward. We had a great time. I also want to extend a thank you to Larry Springfield and Devin Butler, better known as Devin Steele, who were our guest entertainment that night, because they're also graduates of SES. And that was our theme the whole night. We spent a lot of time talking about being SES proud, and through that event is what we showed. On the academic front, we've had actually two meetings, and one was around Expeditionary Learning, High School ELA and RTI. One also tackled charter renewal policy, which I'll have an update in that when I do my IBO report. Thank you.
Moving on to Audit, Budget, Finance, and Committee Report.
We had a meeting Monday, March 19, and discussed mainly Essen, a little bit about student-based budgeting, so we could see the impact and make sure that we're approving the right things to align with that.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell. Capital needs and facilities report?
No report this time.
Evaluation Committee report?
I wish we had a report, but our meeting has been rescheduled till tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock, so hopefully next meeting I'll have a report.
Awesome. Community Outreach and Engagement Committee report?
Thank you, Chair. We did not have a meeting this month, but I do want to remind the board members that we will have a meeting April 10 to go over the parenting communities engagement process. Also, I do want to let the listening public know that on Thursday, March 29, the Memphis Police Department, they will have a Memphis Girls Rock event at World Overcomers Church. This is an invitation to the public. The time will be from 8:30 to 1:30. We also have some of the staff, and I know Board Member Bibbs will also have a, sit on the panel to have a discussion what we have found out from the Memphis Police Department that some of the crime has come from a lot of our females, and so what they're doing is trying to put things in place to let our girls know how important they are and that violence is not the way. Thank you, Chair.
Internal Board Operations Committee report?
Thank you, Chair. So, we actually met today before board meeting, and we, it was part two of the charter renewal policy, which essentially turned into we will have a part three, and we will continue on having conversations, making sure that we bring something, hopefully within the next 30 days, to the board around voting on.
Legislative Advocacy Committee report?
Thank you, Chair. As we all know, the calendar year for our, for our state bills is coming to an end. It will end, I believe, in April. So, once the calendar year has ended, we will have a final report from Tony to let us know what bills we were successful with and what we need to work on next year. I also want to let my fellow board members know that we are going to begin our legislative agenda in June. This will give us ample opportunity so that we can know, I'm sorry, so we can submit our bills and make sure that we have the support that we need so that our representatives can know and understand what needs to be done. So, if you have anything that, any bills or any ideas dealing with the legislative agenda, you can go ahead and start thinking about it, because we're going to start rolling in June. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Love. Procurement Committee?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had a meeting last Tuesday, and the two significant items were the disparity study, progress on that. I think we determined that we needed an updated timeline, so they're going to bring that back to us next month at the meeting in terms of, so we can know where we are with progress on that and building that program. And the next item of significance was discussion around Bayer Purchase and Agreement, and I think there was a robust discussion. There is a resolution that came out of that, because during the meeting, there was some disagreement or misunderstanding. I think there was needed clarity on some terms, and so while the resolution doesn't really address that, but it just addresses some timelines in which we would have to use to, view the documents. So, that's the end of our report.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Now, we'll move to the Superintendent Report.
Thank you. Thank you, board members. Just want to update you, I guess, a couple of things. I guess first, you know, just really positive feedback from the staff and really from the community on the living wage. And I just want to take a couple of minutes, board, and just remind the public of where we were and how your steadfast stewardship of the dollars and making smart strategic choices have led us to where we are now. You know, it was just five years ago, we were merging, and we had a $100 million deficit, and it seemed like for those first three years after the merger, we were faced with $70, $80 million in cuts, and we literally were laying off 500 to 700 people every year. And during that point in time, the board really just made some smart decisions. They were tough at the time, but now you're starting to see those decisions bear fruit. And I just do want to just say to the community that, you know, not only were we able to make this recommendation and do this for our employees, but we're also able to do it in a fiscally prudent and responsible manner, just so proud of Lynn Johnson and his stewardship for this. So, what we essentially will be doing, board, is probably bringing the board a amendment to amend the budget in April, so that this hopefully can take effect May 1. So, that's kind of the status of where we are now. Again, we've been just doing due diligence to make sure there's no unintended consequences, and we haven't found any. So, you know, we also just want, so the board knows, we want a plan toward the end of the year, Hourly Worker Appreciation Day. Again, you know, so many people put forth so much effort every day to make sure our kids are cared for, fed, read, too, taught, and we just want to recognize all the hard work that everybody does, so just wanted to say that. But again, April, the April meeting will bring forth a budget resolution, so this can take place in May. Secondly, want to update the board on an incredible meeting I had with a number of students from Bridges, and those students were, went to high schools almost exclusively in our district, and they approached me and asked if they participated. I guess there's a National Student Day of solidarity where they're protesting gun violence in solidarity with the students in Broward County, and they wanted to know if they participated in this walkout in a very organized way, you know, whether they would be subject to disciplinary action. And there are a lot of constitutional issues, you know, on the surface that we have to consider, but we thought at the end of the day, and what we told them was that if they can do this in a responsible and organized way, and Dr. Ray and his team is having small meetings with them so we can plot this all out, MPD's on board, so we really want to support these students in this way, use it as a teachable moment, and, you know, so we'll have more about that. Again, I think there are more details to work out, and Dr. Ray and his team are working on those. Some issues have come up, the students asked specifically about high school students, and we've asked some questions around middle school and elementary school, so we'll be able to give you more detail about that. And I know some board members had some questions, so if you want to, if I do my best to answer those, if you guys have any questions about, about that particular issue. But again, it's still, I suspect, Dr. Ray, you, your next meeting is scheduled?
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow morning. Okay. And really, the focus was, you know, we were very clear that while the students who were with us were outstanding and had great intentions, there are some, you know, kids who may choose to act up at that point in time, so we want to make sure we have that organized. We want to make sure that for students who don't want to participate, they're not forced to participate. We want to make sure safety, 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 safety is priority number one, but we still want to make sure these kids have an opportunity to express themselves like they are constitutionally allowed to do. So, if there are any questions about that, be glad to answer them.
Mr. Caldwell?
Yes, Superintendent, I appreciate your comments and the work that the district's doing. So, I've had several constituents ask about their middle schoolers and their elementary school students, if they would be subject to any kind of punishment. I think there was even some inconsistency from some of the partners that we have. So, as soon, you know, is that what's going to be clarified in the next day or two?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that, that we were clear in that, you know, we can be supportive of this, but there's more negotiation that needs to happen in terms of, you know, what it looks like in schools, and are we doing high school, are we doing high school, middle school, and elementary school, which obviously it's a whole different perspective from middle schools and elementary schools. So, we'll certainly keep you in the loop. We'll be meeting next week, tomorrow, and then we'll have a follow-up meeting the next week, because it just needs to be laid all out to make sure we can do it in a safe, in a responsible way.
And we'll post that on the website?
Yes.
Okay. And so, I agree with you 100 percent. I think this is a teachable moment. I think that's part of what our democratic process is about, is citizens being able to responsibly and respectfully advocate for what they believe in. I think that's what we try to do up here on the board, so, and I can see where we would be have value in each, each grade level. And so, I applaud you all for considering that and trying to work out the details, and we look forward to seeing that we post that and make sure that it's even, you know, some kind of blast out to parents so they, so they don't have any questions. But thank you, thank you all for your hard work on that.
Ms. Love?
Thank you, Superintendent. I do applaud you for listening to our students and getting their voice. I would like to make a suggestion. Since this will be done on April 20, a suggestion would be that we dedicate that entire week to National Gun Violence, or SES Gun Violence, and this way, we can include all of our elementary school students, middle school students, and high school students not participating in a walkout, but giving them space to express how they feel and to ask questions as it relates to gun violence. Because the gun violence that happened in Florida is not the gun violence that our children see every day. So, there are different types of gun violence, and I think that we should use that entire week to let all of our children, well, create space and allow our schools to help inform our students, and our students can help inform us as it relates to gun violence. That way, the entire district will play a part of this, and I'm not going to say that, you know, a walkout, the entire district walking out, I'm not going to say that's what we need, but I do think we need to create space and maybe have different opportunities, activities for all of our children for that entire week. So, that's something that you guys can think about.
I agree with that. Also, board members, just a couple more updates. So, I'm actually going to be on a panel next Tuesday in connection with MLK 50. It's the Promise Education, our former Secretary of Education, John King, will be on there with, I think it's at 11 o'clock, so would love to have you guys join if you can. And then, finally, wanted to raise the issue that Ms. Jones talked about in terms of the resolution that I, that we would have looked at it. You know, the board authorized us a few weeks ago to essentially negotiate the terms of the sale of the Bayer Building and then bring that back to the board, where part of that process, Bayer has asked us to sign a purchase-sell agreement. Now, the purchase-sell agreement has about nine different outs, but most importantly, the purchase-sell agreement is subject to the board approval and ratification. So, you know, our intention has always been that once we got some terms and did more due diligence, because there's more due diligence that has to happen, we would always, the final decision would certainly be up to the board, which is what we contemplated, but just did want to raise that with you all. I intend to sign the purchase-sell agreement today. I guess, I think you guys have a copy of it, and, you know, I think, again, we've got about nine different outs, including the board has to approve. I think with Ms. Jones's resolution, it just enhances that and just spells out clearly some different things that maybe we hadn't thought about that I, that I actually agree with. So, I just want to let you guys know about the PSA, and I guess if you have any questions about that, I'd be glad to answer them.
Ms. Jones?
Mr. Superintendent, that basically is the essence of what the resolution says. Based on my questions and questions from other board members, we wanted to make sure that there was ample time to really review documents as we get them, and, and one of the things that I'm concerned about is today, I have a document that I'm just getting, trying to read, that's going to be signed, and not having really time to go over it. But if the resolution, if there's some objection that we'll have time on the back end to go over all of these documents, then I'm not opposed to proceeding at this point, but I don't want us to enter into this without, with something a few days to look at. It's too important, the amount of money, and then concerns from the board members. So, the only thing I would say is that in signing this agreement, probably the resolution, if it passed, needs to be attached so that the seller knows that we need all of those documents, regardless of these timeframes. We need 30 days to review.
Okay.
So, I, I want to support what Ms. Jones said, and, and I think, Teresa, we've been on the board together for seven years, and the one thing neither of us ever like is a gun put to our head. And like, I know when we used to have policy and someone would come up and say, "We need this approved in same night." You know, we wanted two readings, and my, my comment was always, "Well, you knew this, it was state law." It came down in April, we're in July. Why are we, why are we looking at now? So, I'm supportive of this, but as long as we have ample opportunity and that the nine conditions are out, are settled, and the outs, that, that we settle those conditions prior to closing, and, and I would respectfully request that we have, when we get to the point where you're ready to make a final decision, that you give us several weeks to do that and, and run through the documents, and, because we've got a couple of attorneys on board and some that like to play attorney, Kevin, and the, that we have ample time to look at it. But I'm supportive of it, I appreciate it, and I think it makes good sense on the surface for our school system. And it actually is in the middle of Ms. Jones's district and would be very beneficial to that area. So, I appreciate you and your staff bringing this to us.
If I could, board members, do we just have the one slide, just because I know that just the public has a lot of interest in it, and I think there was an article that came out in the paper the other day that probably pushed it too far in terms of where we really are. So, if those, if we can just put up those conditions, just so the board and so the public knows, and just, again, for context, we've been negotiating, we've come up with a price, and what's going to happen now over the next few months are a number of things. We've got some environmental things we have to look at, we have more due diligence to look at. So, once we get to a point where if we decide, okay, we think this is the goal, we have to make a recommendation, then we have to come back to the board, and I think that, you know, it's pretty clear, and I agree with that, I mean, at least 30 days, you know, for the board to be able to dive into it. Can we go, I don't know if I have a, I'm sorry. So, these are the closing conditions. You've got to deal with the environmental piece, a bunch of stuff regarding the environment. I think the last, the last thing, which is most important, I think, which has always been consistent with what we said, is that the approval of proposed transaction by SES Board and Bayer's Board. So, this is just really a step in the process, and I'm clear on the resolution, I'm supportive of that, and we'll just make sure we adjust our timeline so the board has adequate time they need before they make whatever final decision.
Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We were in a committee meeting earlier, and, and I had a chance to, once again, see Board Member Jones speak very passionately about wanting due diligence and time when weighing in on any issue. So, I wanted to just speak in support of this resolution, primarily because this is, this is true to form, how she always is from the standpoint of wanting due process prior to making such a substantial decision. Superintendent, you and your team have done a great job. I do believe that from an efficiency standpoint, consolidating our administration is going to be good for kids, not only financially, but it's a lot better going upstairs to deal with an issue than driving out to Graves Creek. So, we started thinking about how spread out our district is and the inefficiencies that it creates for our families, our students, and primarily just the quality for your employees. So, but I just wanted to commend not only the administration, but Board Member Jones and her resolution that this continued to be a very thoughtful process prior to, prior to voting on. Thank you.
Seeing no additional lights, I just want to add, Superintendent, I do think that, I'm sorry, well, one more, one more additional light, Ms. Caldwell?
And I had the same trouble when I was there. It's the glare or something. I agree with both Board Member Jones and Board Member Woods, and I think it would be beneficial for employees. I know that when we want to approve things, we always ask, some of the questions we ask are what were the alternatives? And so, I would like to see a comparison of the other options, because if we're going to do due diligence, we can't do it in a vacuum. So, I would just like to know that, you know, what other options were considered or what will be considered, so that we are sure that, that we're making the right decision. I'm leaning that way, but I just think we need to make sure this is a long-time investment, probably the longest investment we'll ever make other than a school building, and we do that kind of research about where to put the schools and how, and how many seats to put in there. So, I just think we need, I haven't seen anything at this juncture that addresses that, and I think that would be the framework for a really robust discussion and really fulfilling our due diligence obligations.
Ms. Bibbs?
Thank you, Chair. So, after hearing, rather, reading the resolution that Board Member Jones did, and I will say that I do echo what Board Member Caldwell is saying about, through the presentation, understating what are the real options, because I think we are making a decision on something that will live long past us. So, I think let's be real clear before we move forward on anything, that we have looked at every opportunity of what change looks like before we say yea or nay. I would love to see that. Thank you.
Mr. Orgul?
This has not question or support of it, but just a little bit of symbolism as MLK 50 approaches the next week. The, the building, I always call it, Superintendent, I always call it the Plow Building, not the Bayer Building, because it was, it was Plow Drug Company, Sharing Plow Drug Company, Merck, Bayer, and there may have been another name in there, and there were probably 3,000 to 4,000 employees in the building. There are a lot of, a lot of Memphians over time worked there and lived in that neighborhood, in that neighborhood, that had a lot of other great industrial companies. But, an interesting fact, I don't know if it'll ever come out this week, was when the sanitation workers struck, and, and if you all remember, we walked through the building, there's a timeline of what got made, St. Joseph's Little Baby Aspirin, other things. There's a great timeline in there of what happened at that facility. But, the philanthropist who started Plow was Abe Plow, and he's been deceased for 25, 30 years. Scott used to work for his family foundation and his wonderful daughter. And Mr. Plow, when the sanitation workers struck, went to the mayor and offered to settle the strike for, for a dime. He was going to pay out of his pocket a dime an hour to settle the strike, and the city leaders didn't take him up on his offer, and then we know what happened, and, I mean, garbage piled up, and we know what happened in the aftermath of that. But, there's a lot of symbolism in that with us even looking at that piece of property and whether we buy it or not, but there was a great man and a lot of great people associated with that and who cared deeply about the city. So, I call it the Plow Building. I know we're buying it from Bayer, but I think a lot of probably people my age and older probably would say that's the Plow Building, but I just wanted to share that.
Mr. Cornell?
Yeah, Board Member Orgul, also, you know, one of the most wonderful things that was ever saved for our community was Plow Park. Plow Park, which is now the AgriCenter and the Shelby Farms.
Speak to your mic just a little bit more, Mr. Cornell.
One thing that he also did was he saved a huge tract of land and worked to promote it called Plow Park, which later has become one of the largest urban parks in the country. But I wanted to add to my, I'm going to, I'm going to support the resolution, but I'm also looking down the line. I would like to see the environmental reports, and also, I'd like to make sure that this building, it looks very sturdy, can withstand a tornado or a, an earthquake, not withstand, but at least be earthquake resistant, because as Homeland Security calls it, this is, this would be sort of a critical structure that is needed by our community in the event of a disaster. So, I would like to see what the, our engineers say about whether or not that building would withstand or at least resist an expected earthquake.
Seeing no additional lights, you turn it on and you turn it off, you're done. Okay.
Madam, Madam Chair, then?
Ms. Jones?
I don't know if this is procedurally appropriate, but then, given the comments, could we move the resolution to the consent agenda?
I support that.
Okay, so we're coming up to the consent agenda, and we can, if we want to add that, that we're still in the superintendent's report, but definitely if there are no objections. Ms. Love?
This doesn't have anything to do with the Bayer Building, but, nothing to do with, but we are aware that April 20, that's when the 16th begins the week of testing, right? So, when we talk about the?
That was one of the issues that we tried to work, that's one.
Okay. Thank you, principals, for texting me that.
So, Superintendent, I just want to echo that I, I think it's the job of this board to do its due diligence, and with us notwithstanding that we don't have the environmental reports or other things, that it is imperative for us to have all of those documents before we can- we can move forward with having a decision about how we want to purchase or not purchase this building. And so I do want to just reiterate to Board Members that, um, we have the ability to also have our, our counsel to review some of these documents. So Mr. Morris, um, looks like he'll be busy over the next few weeks as we, as the superintendent and his staff prepare some information that we can also have time to review and ask questions at our leisure. So I also support this resolution. Mr. Cornell.
Do you, are we going to put that burden on Mr. Morris?
We are.
Well, that may be the first time Bayer actually caused a headache.
All right, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. I do want to make, uh, a note for the record that there are a few edits to a couple of items. Eleven point seventeen, which is about more Ridgeway ES roof replacement, there was a clerical error, um, where it stated, uh, an amount for the recommendation of three hundred dollars, it's actually three thousand dollars. And then also for eleven point nineteen, the Durham Student Services Contract, um, there is, uh, it should state that this is a two-year, um, contract in the amount of forty-nine thousand five hundred, the first year being, forty-nine million five hundred, thank you, the first year being twenty-four million two hundred, and the second year being twenty-four million two hun- sorry, twenty-five million three hundred. Um, so let me just repeat for the record, that the Durham Student, eleven point nineteen, Durham Student Services Contract, in the amount of a two-year contract in the amount of forty-nine million five hundred, the first year being twenty-four million two hundred, the second year being twenty-five million three hundred. So if, uh, Board Members don't have any objections, we will move forward with those on the consent agenda, and I do want to, at this time, entertain that Ms. Jones has asked for the resolution to also be moved to the consent agenda. If there are no objections, then we'll do so. Yeah, we will, yes. Seeing no objections. We are, are there any items that any, any other Board Members would like to remove from the agenda? Are any, any other items for the consent agenda that you would like removed? Superintendent, are there any items that you have that you're removing from the consent agenda? Okay. We did add to the consent agenda that we moved the Palmeroy IT. Um, we've removed that?
We just moved, it was on the, it was in the action.
Okay. It was on the action and now it will be moved to consent?
Yeah, it's on consent.
Okay. Seeing no other...
Somebody said they wanted to move the...
We do need to remove the strategic fund allocation from the consent agenda to the action, as well as about more...
No, I just took care of it.
Okay, took care of that one. So we're just removing the strategic allocations to the action agenda?
Nobody else?
No other roll call vote?
No.
Oh, let me read them into the record, so that you know what you're voting on. Eleven point two, sub grant of choice neighborhood initiative, urban strategies in the action item, uh, in the amount of one million two hundred and fifty thousand. Eleven point three, Superintendent's Learning Academy instructional materials, the amount of five hundred thousand. Eleven point four, curriculum associates in the amount of two hundred sixty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty-five cents. Eleven point five, Xanadu printed materials, high school ELA curriculum in the amount of nine hundred eighteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-two cents. Eleven point six, expeditionary learning curriculum materials, K five, in the amount of eight million two hundred eighty-six thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars and eleven cents. Eleven point seven, EL education contract for professional development, the amount of five hundred and sixty-one thousand. Eleven point nine, NWEA map assessments in the amount of eight hundred and seven thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars. Eleven point ten, Teach for America contract in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand. Eleven point eleven...
Eleven eleven, twelve words.
Oh.
Yeah, eleven eleven, twelve.
Eleven point twelve, miscellaneous, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, SY miscellaneous cafeteria supplies in the amount of two hundred and sixty-four thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars. Eleven point thirteen, cafeteria equipment, steamers in the amount of one hundred ninety-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Eleven point fourteen, nutritional services in the amount, automatic heat seal litting machine in the amount of two hundred twenty-two thousand seven hundred eighty-nine and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents. Eleven point fifteen, Maxine Smith Academy Roof Replacement in the amount of one hundred sixty-four thousand four hundred and ninety-three dollars. Eleven point sixteen, Kingsbury Elementary School Roof Replacement in the amount of one hundred ninety-eight thousand seven hundred forty-five dollars fifty-five cents. Eleven point eighteen, Thamen Marcus Company Facility Service Agreement in the amount of one hundred eighty-eight thousand eight hundred seventy dollars. Eleven point seventeen, Balmoral Ridgeway Elementary Roof Replacement, one hundred sixty-six thousand seven hundred seventy-seven dollars. Eleven point nineteen, Durham Student Services Contract in the amount of forty-nine, forty-nine million five hundred thousand. Eleven point twenty, fuel, the amount of two million dollars. Eleven point two-one, March Budget Amendment in the amount, um, sorry, Budget Amendment, Budget Amendment. Eleven point two-three, Palmeroy IT in the amount of one hundred thousand three hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty-six, fifty-seven cents. Twelve point two, nope, that's it, that's it.
And Ms. Jones's...
And the resolution, uh, for Bayer.
Would you like to...
Would you like to read that into the record?
Resolution requiring the Board of Education's review of Bayer property agreement prior to closing. Whereas the elected members of the Shepherd County Board of Education on January thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, approved Superintendent's recommendation granting authority to negotiate terms and conditions of a purchase and sale agreement with Bayer Healthcare LOC, and whereas the purchase and sale agreement is subject to ratification by the board prior to closing, and whereas the board is committed to full transparency and a strong desire to exercise due diligence, and whereas the board must inspect and prove all documents prior to execution signage by the Superintendent and his designated needs relating to the terms and conditions of the purchase and sale agreement, and whereas the transaction of such, is of such complexity that the terms and conditions of the previously approved recommendation to negotiate terms and conditions of purchase require clarification, and this is not the final, this is not the final, this is the first draft. I'm sorry, Madam Chair, uh, this is not the final version. Do we have the...
Version I have.
It may be, but I'm thinking it's not.
Staff, do you have a final version?
Just, we had about three different versions, and I want to make sure that I'm reading the right one.
You want to make sure we're approving the one you want.
I think it's much, it's short.
Here you go.
So...
Turn your microphone.
What I just said, uh, whereas the board shall require, board require independent report of the American with Disabilities Act status and any ADA compliance requirements of the property of thirty thirty Jackson, whereas the board shall require at least thirty days to review the final negotiated contract and all documents, including but not limited to specifics of all terms related to liability and whole harmless agreement of the purchase and sale contract prior to submission to the Board of Education at a business meeting or special call meeting. Therefore, be it resolved that any and all documents signed by the Superintendent or designated need prior to the board shall, of said closing documents contain language specifically clarifying that all documents signed by the Superintendent's designated need are not binding without approval of the majority of the elected members of the Board of Education. Be it therefore resolved that Shepherd County Board of Education directs the Superintendent to take all necessary action to ensure compliance with the terms and conditions of this resolution dated September the twenty-seventh, day of Mar- I mean, submitted this twenty-seventh day of March. Teresa Jones, Board Member, Shepherd County Board of Education, Teresa District Two.
We are now moving to the approval of the consent agenda. Roll call vote, please.
Board Member Caldwell.
Aye.
Board Member Orgel.
Aye.
Board Member Woods.
Aye.
Board Member Love.
Aye.
Board Member McCormick.
Aye.
Board Member Jones.
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs.
Aye.
Board Member Cornell.
Aye.
Board Chair Avant.
Aye.
You have eight ayes.
We have a quorum, the agenda, consent agenda is approved, we're moving on now to requests for action. Twelve point one, Sherwood Middle School Life Safety Mechanical and ADA Adaptions in the amount of four million nine hundred ninety-seven thousand five hundred and thirty dollars. Ms. Phelan.
Yes. Um, the amended recommendation is contract price, the contractor agrees to perform all of the work described in Article Four for the total lump sum of four million nine hundred ninety-seven thousand five hundred thirty and zero dollars, which consists of base bid of four million three hundred twenty-six thousand three hundred and zero dollars. SCBE will also pay contractor thirty-six, thirty thousand six hundred and zero dollars for the cost performance bond for the project. Owner will maintain a contingency of four hundred thirty, four hundred thirty-two thousand six hundred and zero dollars, an allowance not to exceed two hundred and eight thousand and zero, uh, dollars. It's exhausting.
Seeing no lights, can we get a roll call vote?
Board Member Caldwell.
Oh, yeah, motion. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Can I get a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this, uh, approve the Sherwood Middle School Life Safety Mechanical and ADA Adaptations.
Second.
Second by Ms. Jones. Roll call vote.
Board Member Caldwell.
Aye.
Board Member Orgel.
Aye.
Board Member Woods.
Aye.
Board Member Love.
Aye.
Board Member McCormick.
Aye.
Board Member Jones.
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs.
Aye.
Board Member Cornell.
Aye.
Board Chair Avant.
I don't...
You have nine ayes.
That motion passes. This is, now we're moving on to twelve point two, sale of vacant land, South Area. Superintendent, can we get a motion and second, then we can discuss?
So moved.
Ms. Jones. Mr. Caldwell, second. Uh, and this is in amount of one hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Ms. Phelan, the South Area Office lands it.
Um, I don't have a...
There's no, there's no, there's no additional questions. Okay, we probably covered everything in facilities.
We won't create questions.
The quiz starts now, Ms. Phelan. Okay, seeing no lights, we're going to move for a roll call vote, please.
Board Member Caldwell.
Aye.
Board Member Orgel.
Aye.
Board Member Woods.
Aye.
Board Member Love.
Aye.
Board Member McCormick.
Aye.
Board Member Jones.
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs.
Aye.
Board Member Cornell.
Aye.
Board Chair Avant.
Aye.
You have nine ayes.
That motion passes. Twelve point three, resolution opposing the use of school scores and teacher evaluations. Mr. Cornell, do you want to read this into the record?
Recognize.
And you need to move, make a motion, move for an adoption, and then we can discuss.
I need, I move, I move for adoption of the resolution.
Okay, go ahead and read into the record. His resolution.
His resolution opposing the use of school scores and teacher evaluations. Whereas teachers have objected to being held accountable for work for which they are not responsible, and whereas teachers should be rewarded for choosing to stay and teach in the most challenging of environments, good teachers who dedicate themselves to teach in low-performing schools have been penalized by being required to take school scores. And whereas teachers are financially penalized for working with the most distressed student populations, and whereas the current system is unfair, demoralizing, and subsequently a disincentive to get and keep, to get and keep our most capable and dedicated teachers where they are most needed, and whereas it is wrong for a dedicated trained professional to be subject to such a collectivist policy, therefore be it resolved that school scores will not be used to evaluate anyone except members of the administrative team, and be it further resolved that the definition of school score is any score within the school that cannot be wholly attributed to an, the individual, an individual being evaluated. And I would like to talk to the Chair about sending this to committee and seeing where the state comes in and where we come in and, and what we are doing with salaries and whatnot, so.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there, um, you want to, you have a point you want to make, Mr. Cornell? Go ahead.
So do I...
Is there, you were elaborating, we needed to have a second before you could start discussing it. Go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, Madam Chair, would you like to send this to a committee?
I think so. There's a lot of implications with our state statute that, um, has assessments, it's a, the teacher evaluations is a part of, um, the TIM score that they receive, and I think that we have to do some more due diligence on our part. So my recommendation to you, Mr. Cornell, would be to send this to the Academic Review Committee.
And, if I may, uh, I think it's good that we look at that and delineate where, what is state responsibility and what is ours, because I do know the state will let us spend our money for salaries in different ways, and so I think we should look at that.
We have a couple of comments. Mr. Caldwell.
I, uh, you know, there are a lot of things within that resolution that I agree with, and I do think, uh, I do have concerns that we're, um, aligned with what state law says, and then just maybe some wording issues, but the gist of it and what you're trying to accomplish, I think is good.
Ms. Love.
Oh, I had my light on to make a motion to send it to committee. I would like to make a motion to send this resolution to committee for further discussion.
What is the second?
Second by Ms. Bibbs. I did want to also make a point, Mr. Cornell understood the, the passion behind the resolution. I do think that there are some things that we have to look at, definitely with state law, but understanding quite clearly that many of our teachers, um, are rated on a scale that doesn't really reflect sometimes the actual effort. And I think this was part of a great discussion that we had in our academic retreat, um, on Friday, and Dr. Griffin can attain to that there's a lot of effort that's being made by our teachers that isn't reflected in the evaluation at this time. So understand the intent behind it. So, um, the motion before us is, uh, a recommendation to send this resolution to committee. Can I get a roll call vote for that?
Board Member Caldwell.
Aye.
Board Member Orgel.
Aye.
Board Member Woods.
Aye.
Board Member Love.
Aye.
Board Member McCormick.
Aye.
Board Member Jones.
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs.
Aye.
Board Member Cornell.
Aye.
Board Chair Avant.
Aye.
You have nine ayes.
That motion passes. Now we have twelve point four, resolution approving the SDS Board Member's strategic allocations, and I'm going to read those into the record. We have, um, Vice Chair Love is allocating five hun- five thousand five hundred dollars to EE Jeter, K eight school, Woodstock Middle is receiving five thousand, Delano, optional schools receiving fourteen thousand, for a total of twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, Board Member Caldwell is allocating Idewell, Idewell Elementary, one thousand four hundred dollars, and so it'd be resolved that strategic, to approve, I need a motion to approve the strategic board school fund allocation.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Love.
Second.
Second by Ms. Caldwell. Mr. Orgel.
Uh, whoever made this, uh, suggestion last year, the budget was brilliant, I don't remember which Board Member, I'll take credit for it.
If it was brilliant, I'll take it.
Gotcha. Yeah. Is...
And so it'd be resolved that strategic, to approve, I need a motion to approve the strategic board school fund allocation.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Love, second by Ms. Caldwell. Mr. Orgul.
Uh, whoever made this, uh, suggestion last year, the budget was brilliant. I don't remember which board member would all take credit for it.
If it was brilliant, I'll take it.
Gotcha, yeah. Is that an oxymoron? Kevin, was, uh, no. So anyway, um, but I wanted a little bit of clarity because today's the twenty-seventh day, somewhere in there, of March. So we all have schools with needs, and some of us have used the funds, some of us not used the funds. And I want to make sure, because our principals and our teachers come up with things, I saw something great on there. It was a beautification in Idewild, I think, um, fifteen hundred dollars, fourteen hundred ninety-five dollars. Do we have, and do our schools have to spend this by a certain amount? I need some clarity because there was some ambiguity this week, and I think it sent some of our schools into shock. So I, I just want Lynn.
I mean, and I thought we, so can we?
To clearly and emphatically state that, that we've made this decision to give this money to our schools and that they have the latitude to spend it.
So, yes, so, um, Chief Phelan and I have both shared throughout the district kind of our year-end spending plan or closure of when we have to spend. And I, I would say that, um, the most important thing that the schools need to do is make sure that they're obligating the funds, so encumbering the funds. Uh, and that's part of the board policy where, especially for the larger projects, if you're putting on a P O and a requisition, but, and we have dates for that, uh, before the end of the school year. They, those funds will roll over until they're complete those projects.
Like in capital projects, like if you're in the middle of starting a school.
Yeah.
And the school takes three months longer, but it goes to the next budget year, that doesn't mean that we stop construction and the funds go away.
So the, the key, and I think we can make sure we're clear on that, is that they need to make sure that they're encumbering the funds, putting on the requisition, and putting on the P O. And then over the summer, if these projects are still continuing, then we'll worry about the spending regarding that.
Cause I, I will tell you, and I bet you I get eight other people that agree on this one. That if one of the principals in my district or, like, I gave some money to one of Teresa's schools, uh, called me and said, "We clawed that money back and we don't have it now." That, that might call for a special call board meeting, and, uh, so.
So I, I, I don't think that's the, that's the intent. And we've been working with, Aisha's done incredible job of actually monitoring.
She's done a great job.
Yeah, uh, I agree, of like the requisitions of whether they're, um, have pre-encumbrance and encumbrance. So we're gonna review that list and compare it with all that's been approved and make sure that principals are, are doing that.
Cause our, our parents, our teachers, and our administrators within the schools and the principals in most cases have been deeply involved with the nine board members on this process.
Yep.
And they've sold this to their constituency that, hey, we're getting this improvement, we're getting this cleanup, we're getting this computer program, we're doing all this. So I just want to make sure that we don't try to claw back any money from them because they might not understand our rules sometimes. And I want to make sure that they're covered because they've worked hard.
Board Member Orgul, I want as much money to go to our schools as possible, so I am not looking to claw back a dime.
Okay, thanks.
Board Member Love.
Nope. She knows you're, she knows you about to cause trouble, so go first. No, I was just joking. Uh, Madam Chair, it's your meeting, so.
Yeah, I just called Ms. Love.
My only question was superintendent, will this be an investment for our next school year budget? For our budget, I'm sorry.
Yes, it's, um, it's included, it's included now.
Included? Okay. Lynn, you're not answering.
So is it, I, I, I think the, the way that we have it laid out, Ms. Love, we have a balanced budget. We're gonna share with you guys a balanced budget, and we have the investments that, in the detail investments, and the ones we really recommend. I'm thinking it's part of the record.
That's exactly right.
Okay, and thank you for that, um, because we know a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, um, it's, it's a lot. But I know that if we receive these additional funds next year, uh, we'll be able to do more for our schools, so thank you. No.
Mr. Woods.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Uh, so I, I do understand Lynn, the, the reason from a fiscal standpoint, making sure that, uh, those funds are obligated in order from a, uh, if we're gonna go to a county commission, you know, as, making that a possible ask, we want to make sure that the dollars we're putting out there are actually getting used. And again, each one of those become many projects that you all are having to manage. And so, uh, I'm also mindful of that. I know it's, uh, you guys do it with a smile, but I know it's creating an additional workload for you and your team. So we appreciate, uh, how you guys have helped us manage that process. Uh, my, uh, my comment to you, uh, using this opportunity is really was an I T issue that has come about. I know we're gonna be meeting this week. But as board members make these investments, if it is a technology investment, if it is, uh, equipment, uh, let's be thinking about the, the, the repair costs or the additional costs down the line. Because we don't want to be looking at an investment that we made two years, something breaks, and we say, well, we didn't budget for that cost of, that, that cost of keeping the upkeep of that particular investment. So, uh, we're seeing that in some small I T issues at some of our schools where, uh, community partners have made investments, they follow protocol, they've bought off of our vendor list, and now they're saying, we're saying that, well, unfortunately, we don't have the money to, built into the budget to make that repair. And so, uh, I think that that sends the wrong message for people that are giving money to our schools. And we just need to make sure that we're baking that into our overall budget. Maybe call it stuff breaks and, uh, make sure you have a bucket of dollars to pull from, uh, to fix those things that break.
Yeah, now, I'll, I'll definitely, um, partner with, um, our C I O in terms of that, for sure. If there's any equipment that are benefiting kids, I, I think is, it goes beyond just a budget issue. We need to just make sure it happens.
Mr. Caldwell.
So I, I guess this is a product of being married thirty-six years, but I'll put it this way, I don't want you guys to take this the wrong way. But the resolution that we approved to do this money suggested that we had it all put in by the end of March. And so we may need to change the resolution, but I, I, I think, uh, rather than, um, talk to the administration, maybe we need to follow through on what we're supposed to do in a timely manner.
Ms. Bibbs. Ms. Bibbs.
So, um, a couple of things. I think Chris just touched on what I was gonna ask regarding timeline. Because I know that a, a good number of us have just a few dollars left, and then some, um, probably are still making final decisions on a, a larger amount. But what do we need to do regarding next steps? So we can make sure, because the resolution did say by the end of March, so that we will be in compliance with our own resolution. And the next step will be as well, sending us a clear, um, list of how the funds can be spent. Because I think schools were asking for a, a wide array of things. So when you, when you're saying that there were some no's I was saying, and then there were some yeses I was saying, and I would go back to Aisha regarding asking, so, so tell, send me the list, and we just never got a list. And I think in order for us to make the best decision around these dollars, is give us a, a list so we can be informed around making those decisions. As well as a timeline with the, for the next couple of months, so that we are in compliance with these funds.
So, go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
So we can, we can definitely be clear in terms of how the funds are being used. I guess, given that this was kind of the first year, there were only, there were not only financial considerations to consider, but also legal considerations in terms of the use of the funds. Uh, along with that, uh, we can definitely map out the dates as well. Uh, we realized that this was somewhat off to a slower start than we would have liked, and we take responsibility for that, which is why we have been a little bit lenient, um, in terms of the going past the resolution.
So, um, Superintendent, I think in light of, I know that there are still a couple of schools that are finalizing, at least in my district, there are a couple of schools that are finalizing, um, their projects. And so I would like to ask the board if they could, if we could, by two-thirds vote, we could move to have the resolution extended until June thirtieth, so that we know that those encumbrances will also be taken into consideration if we are saying that schools can spend that money up until the end of the school year. Is that May or is that June?
Or May.
Okay.
Which will give them the month of June to make sure that they're going through the process.
So if board members might make a motion to, um, extend the Resolution Approving S D S Board Member Strategic School Funds Allocation until May twenty eighteen, we can do that by two-thirds vote. Uh, Mr. Caldwell.
So I'll, I'll make the resolution that we extend it to, to the end of, um, May and, uh, acknowledge that I, I still have a balance that I haven't done too.
I'll second that. Because I think Ms. Love is trying to take our money, so I, so she's trying to push it. No, Delano, no.
Yeah, so, um, I, I, it is, we have, that is one of the, if you use one of the most overused words in S D S history, it's definitely gonna be Delano, that is for sure. So, um, could we do, do we need to do a roll call vote?
You do.
A roll call, oh, let me just add one other thing, that I appreciate the time and energy, um, and commitment that Mr. Johnson and Ms., uh, that Aisha has put into this process, Ms. Goins has put into this process. Um, formally call Ms. Goins and Mr. John, Chief Johnson. I just want to be very clear to give them the respect due for creating a process for board members to be able to give resources to their schools, have conversation, have dialogue, and understanding that on top of all the other things that you're doing, that you have made this a pretty seamless process, at least from my standpoint, on how I'm able to allocate funds to my schools, and they can follow that process that has been outlined and that this board has agreed to. So I appreciate your time in, in making this happen. So we could get a roll call vote.
Board Member Caldwell.
Aye.
Board Member Orgul. Board Member Woods.
Aye.
Board Member Love.
Aye.
Board Member McCormick. Board Member Jones. Board Member Bibbs.
Before I say aye, I do want to add that we do want to extend, um, accommodations to Ms. Karen Key and Ms. Shanice Anthony from the board office, because they were very beneficial in making sure for those of us who have spent our money to make sure that they were our key connectors with schools. So I do want to make sure we acknowledge them in this process. Thank you.
Board Member Cornell.
Aye.
Board Chair Avant.
Aye.
You have nine ayes.
That motion passes, that there being a two-thirds in favor extending the resolution deadline, um, till May twenty eighteen, that is adopted.
Superintendent, I think that's, there were no other items.
Calling names. I, I have, uh, I have a comment.
Mr. Woods.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I stepped out for just a minute. My daughter had a softball game across the street, Superintendent. So we did win thirteen to zero, by the way, go Maxine Smith's Team Academy. Uh, but did, while I was out, I was listening to it on eighty-eight point five, but did we talk about the gala from this past Saturday? Did we mention that? I just wanted to make sure I, uh, give shout out to the staff, uh, for a great job, job well done, so I missed that comment. So it can't hurt to thank you guys, and I was part of the cleanup crew. Uh, so, uh, I, I got pictures to prove it, so thank you guys for taking my picture for the five minutes there. All right. But anyway, I just want to make sure I gave a shout out for you guys. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Cornell. Okay, so as a last note, I just want to remind all of our listening audience that registration is now open for the eighteen nineteen school year. I have completed my registration for my daughter, want to make sure, well, make sure that folks are doing that. And it is very easy, the SNAP code really transfers all your information, and then allows you to register for the Superintendent Summer Learning Academy. So we really want to thank the staff for making that a pretty seamless process. Um, I encourage all parents, please try to get your students registered before the school year is out. Yes, Ms. Anthony.
To clarify for the record, did the board vote to extend the board allocations to May thirty-first, to May thirty-first? Or, well, if they did, has the board voted to approve the allocations for March?
Oh, we both, there was a, an extending of that, and there was a vote, but do we need to do a roll call vote for the approval of the March?
Yes, ma'am.
Let's do that. So can I get a motion to approve the March twenty eighteen allocations?
Motion.
A second by Mr. Caldwell. Roll call vote.
Board Member Caldwell.
Aye.
Board Member Orgul. Board Member Woods.
Great catch, aye.
Board Member Love. Board Member McCormick. Board Member Jones. Board Member Bibbs. Board Member Cornell.
Does this include Aisha's processing fee?
Yes.
Aye.
Board Chair Avant.
Aye, that motion passes.
So, no other items, this meeting is adjourned.